Noel, I did at one point, but then I'll put it back in.
But don't we need something on that TV there?
Mike, yeah.
Waiting to work out.
I can't work out or anything for long.
Rich, I just signed that to you as well. Did you get that? Okay. I meant to get it here earlier this week.
It's good to wear my sweep too because I stop wearing mine at night.
Good man.
You're live.
You just don't make like a bad out of it. Thank you for that. All right, guys. Step back. Oh, my.
I just, I just have a lot.
Only, only taped.
Yeah, yeah. All right. And we'll be back in our seats, ready to go. All right. Call to order. Town North Ramford, town council meeting. Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The nation is fair and fair. The truth stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please.
Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano.
Here.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Goode.
Here.
Councilor Mace.
Here.
And Councilor Cleveland.
Here.
Thank you. All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes for the previous meeting. May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, WPCA and Town Council meeting.
So moved with one exception on page six under police commission. A part of the grant that was used to purchase iPads and radio equipment, not fiber. Can you just change that? It was part of the grant was used to purchase some iPads and radio equipment. Where's the second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion for Councilor Diamond, seconded by. Just an amendment. Okay. With the amendment, Secretary of Councilor Downs, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. All right, thank you. All right, on to the regular town council meeting. Item three, town manager report, Michael.
We have update on COVID. Unfortunately, the number positivity rate remains high at thirteen percent. And the variant continues to run. Continue to monitor that and hope for a plateau and leveling off, but has yet to happen. I'm hoping next meeting will have some positive downward trend. But that remains, I guess, overly optimistic and we'll just see how it, how it trends and how it runs. But right now, it's same, same old, same old right now. Just spots of, you know, spikes that pop up. And, you know, we hear in different departments and we'll continue to monitor it the best we can.
Did you give out more of the test kits?
We have. It's been a pretty steady flow since Friday in terms of both the kits that we're giving out, you know, here Monday through Friday until, you know, supplies last while they last. And additional masks, because we have a great supply of masks as well. So we're offering that to anyone that comes in and we're just taking names and recording that and getting them out to the public. So it's been pretty, pretty steady.
No, no new tests to report, thankfully?
No.
Great. Let's hope this gets weaker and weaker as it moves along.
So that's it on COVID unless there are any other questions. Next is report and permit project building committee, high school. Well, actually, you know, let's, let's maybe look at this as with the presence of Rusty Malakair today at QA and M. You had requested that he be present to give an update on the intermediate school. But certainly, I missed the meeting last night. I have the minutes here, I can read from them. But I'll just give you the highlights and then of course allow Rusty to speak to any of those issues on the high school. And then maybe we could, I could give you the police and then we can get him in and out for the NBIS. But as the discussion on NBIS last night, obviously went through some of their previous discussions, which took place around the hanging and hangers in terms of the type of product they're using. So they're wrapping up that discussion. And then I think one of the major issues, and Rusty can confirm, was about switching gear and the lead time for electric, electric switching gear and panels, distribution panel that won't likely be here until April of two thousand and twenty-three. So that is kind of present, obviously, some scheduling issues that we've got to, got to work through. But I think in my absence of last night, Rusty would be able to speak to.
Does that hold up occupancy?
It should, right? I, I don't want to put words, but come on up, Rusty. And I know that's one of the issues that they, they talked about because they're trying to hit that target for December and make sure everything's on, on schedule.
Hi, Rusty. Good evening, everybody. So this issue came up actually yesterday. The, the switchgear has three panels, three boxes, basically. Two, the three are local, that from what we were told that there is available, there's no issues with them. The third one, which has some disconnects, and it gets kind of technical and even I'm, you know, it's not my area of expertise, but that's the, the box that, that there are some concerns about the delivery time, time with. So far, the discussions have been around the fact that they can do a temporary, do some temporary work in there and allow the, the systems to function because basically this will power the entire building. So it's very early in the discussion. Again, it came up yesterday. We've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at noon with members of the building committee. The purpose of the discussion last night with the building committee was to let them know that this, this situation exists. There are three different scenarios that we can resolve, you know, and get, get school open for the, for the December timeframe. But they all have to be really vetted. We want to make sure that all life safety and other concerns are addressed completely. And the building committee will insist on that. So that's really something that we'll start that discussion at the meeting tomorrow with the engineers, with my team, the contractor, members of the building committee are going to be on this, in this meeting. And then we'll present some of the information of the, the results of that conversation to the building committee next Monday. So at this point, it's a little premature in terms of what exactly is going to happen. But the construction manager has three, three different approaches. Ultimately involve everybody and, you know, we have to get sign offs from the local officials as well before a building will get its TCO. So that's, that's the, the issue that came up and that we discussed primarily last night. The, the issue with the hangers that you, that were brought up, that was resolved. We did have a meeting. There was a, there was a question about the type of hangers. There was information, the engineers were relying on information from the manufacturer. The information provided to them initially was that it could meet all the criteria. After they had approved everything, there was some letters that we, we were made aware of that sort of put the, the onus on the engineers and they said, wait a minute, this is a manufacturer's product. We're not going to, they've got to stand behind their product. Ultimately, the way it was resolved is that they're going to put one of the specified hangers and, and replace all the hangers that had already been installed with the specified hangers. And the construction manager has given that direction to the electrical contractor and the mechanical contractor and, and that's how they're proceeding. So that issue is, you know, it was an issue, it's no longer an issue. And that's how we're pretty much addressing everything. We're on site every week. My team's on site, I'm on site. The clerk of the works is on site. Members of the building committee are there and, you know, we have the advantage of having three members that are highly knowledgeable about building systems, which is where most of your issues are in a building. And so they're able to look at pictures, look at information, ask questions. And we've been able to resolve everything as we move along. So that's very positive. I look at it, it's a positive thing because it makes us all work together as a team. And they understand what, what's going on in the buildings, what's being constructed. The project is moving very, very quickly. You know, the, the walls are already going in, the studs are up, the, you can see the masonry is going up. There's a mock-up panel that's, that's been provided. It's not a hundred percent complete. They have to still provide, you know, the materials for the aeroscrap and the brick are on site. They still have to put those on the mock-up panel. We look at the mock-up panel from a perspective of the quality and the workmanship because that's what we're going to compare it to when they do work on the actual building. So that's ongoing. And then we just are monitoring all the work that's going on on site.
Great. Looks good.
So the intermediate school.
Yeah, we can just, let me briefly, yeah, just do a pause and, and take up item two, which is the police department. And also, that was on the agenda for last night. Now I'll just recap from the minutes, but the, their, their review of the stair plan external was done administratively by the town planner. And that is minor in nature in terms of the change. So that was, he was able to approve that internally as an administrative process rather than going back through, or back through P and Z. Drawings will be ready early for the May twentieth or next meeting, next week on the twenty-third. And that the architect will be present there at that meeting in an effort to get those documents finalized and ready and out on the street. So reading through, again, wasn't there, but reading through that everything is moving along with PD with those documents that they need to get ready.
So is so the end of the month, having the bid out on the street is still a valid? Because I'm very concerned about that.
Yeah. As far as I know, and I, I think Michelle clerked it, so I, I don't know if there were any hiccups there or anything that I might have missed. But that's. Looks good.
Yep. All right.
Good.
Well, you know, and Monday will be another bellwether. Just, you know, again, drawings promised. You know, see.
So the drawings are a week early.
Yeah. So.
And there, there will be a hard copy. Have the PD, an electronic copy going out as well.
Good.
Okay, thank you. All right, Stanley T. Williams?
Stanley T. Williams, we met with the architect, Tom Hibbert, today on site. We're gathering information for him, which includes some very old building plans that we have. We were able to give to him that he can, he has a process by which they can try and get those replicated without falling apart the bridle. And he's going to put them in sleeves and then go through a copy process. So he's got, he's on track. Unfortunately, you know, I told him the, the wish of the council to move expeditiously and he says it's a stretch, but he's, he gets the message and he knows that that's what we're going to be pushing for real hard to try and get this as a, as a fall project. So we hope, hope for the best.
Okay. And Rusty, on to the intermediate project.
So I do have a handout for you, but probably have you flipping through all the pages. I'm going to just talk about it first and then we can certainly open it up to questions. I'll start with the schedule. We're providing ninety percent set to the, to the building committee on Monday. They will have the drawings for two weeks to review and comment. And then we'll get them back, get their comments back. And so our goal is pretty much middle of next, next month to be ready to go out, go out to bid. The, the process has taken a lot longer because we keep discovering things that need to be addressed, which is a good thing because you don't want to discover them while we're under construction. So there'll be some pictures in, in, in here that you will see. I'll give you an example. There are some windows, some storefront that, that usually you'll have a, a masonry, it's masonry and there's a steel lintel that supports the masonry. That lintel covers at least two-thirds of the masonry. Well, what you have are conditions in a couple of cases where you can't even see the lintel. You can see more than two-thirds of the masonry itself. So we brought in some folks to take a look at that. Because you don't want to try to, to do any destructive demo on that because you don't know what you're going to run into. But we've been able to find ways to address those types of issues. I did bring those issues up to the building committee and the building committee said, absolutely, we want to address all, all the issues such as that. There's been, you know, we had, when we started the process, there were a couple of pieces of trim on the windows that had been, that were missing. Well, that continued to happen and we've got now seven or eight locations. So I did bring that up with the committee, thinking that maybe those came off, they were stored somewhere. Apparently, nobody knows anything about them. So what we're trying to do is create alternates within this, this bid package so that we can address all those issues. And then you could, you would have a list of, of what the cost is to do that. Because some of these items were not in the original budget, some of them will be covered within the original budget because we had, we had contingencies and we had an escalation and design contingency built in there. There are cases, for instance, at the, I guess it's the south entrance, where the, the ground is heaved. And so what happens is the door is kind of open or there's a, there's a big gap between, you know, elevation change between the, the threshold of the door and the pavement. So those are issues that I'd asked the committee if they want to address while we're doing that. And they said yes. So we'll address those, those types of issues as well. There, there is some, some good news. I don't want to be only presenting bad news. We had a, members from the Masonry Institute walk the job with us just to, because we wanted to get another opinion. You know, we think that much of that issue is that the deep rake joints on the masonry, that if we put regular joints on the building, we're going to re-point and do those joints. That may be causing a lot of the moisture retention because the moisture just sits there on that little, the little lip of, of the brick where the, where the rake joint is. Which makes us, you know, we thought that the gentleman from the Masonry Institute thinks that that would be a major factor in terms of improving and not having some of the staining coming down. Of course, as you know, we're going to now have a parapet around the entire building. So there won't be any water, you know, intentionally flowing to down the face of the building. So that's completely removed from the design and the design process. And so we'll have both the rake joints improved to a regular joint and then of course the parapets that'll make this, the building, it'll look slightly different, but it'll make it waterproof and you won't have the issues with the, with water and the, and the mold and the staining that's going on.
They give any opinion on structural integrity in effect?
We, we did take a look at that. When we re-point, we'll get, learn a lot more. What we've discussed with the building committee, they're going to, the first step is going to be to power wash the entire building. That in itself, so if some of the loose ground in there is going to come out. We did walk the entire building. There are some areas that we're going to have to do more than just simply re-pointing. We're going to have to, you know, very, we're going to have to add some ground into the building. It may mean removing some brick. The good news is it's up high and that's also where the parapet is going in. So we were planning on removing a brick or two anyway. So that's going to work to our advantage in that sense, that since we're removing the brick in those locations, that's where the loose ground is. We'll be able to address both of the issues at the same time.
So we're not the bandana broken, we're actually able to fix this and be a viable building for a good period of time?
It's, it's a complex fix because, you know, we're removing the roof and we're also doing the masonry work. And so the question is keeping the building watertight while they're doing this work. We're going to zone it and have phases so they're going to work in, in specific areas. Because the last thing you want is the, the mason to pull down the, the bricks and then the roofer comes in and starts taking, you know, taking the roof off. And then we have torrential rainfall and now you've got a condition where there's damage underneath to the building itself. So we're putting a real detailed phasing approach to how they're going to do this. They'll have the opportunity to come back and give an alternate if they think that they've got a better way to do it, that we will review. If there's a less expensive but sure way to do it, then we will be open to those suggestions as well.
Mr. Mayor, question. Rusty, this seems pretty significant, the work that's going to need to be done. Some of it may be, as you've alluded, structural. What are the plans as far as keeping students in the building while it's being done?
So the hope had been originally to do it while the students were out of, out of school. But just material availability, especially for roofing, insulation, et cetera, is going to make that almost impossible to happen. So we're going to have to coordinate that. There may be areas that we're going to have to say, students are, you know, how do we zone, phase it so that while students are in the building, they're not going to be in a certain area where we're going to do work? So that's, that might have to be the reality. Right now, as we look at it, if we go out to bid, let's say in the next month, month and a half, we receive bids, we'll evaluate what the availability of materials is, whether they can actually start doing certain work in the fall. One of the things we'd really like them to do is to at least do some of the re-pointing work because that's on the exterior of the building. And so that can be done with very little impact on education inside the building. But that's something we're going to have to really have a conversation with the, the board of ed to make sure that how we are doing it and where we're doing it, it's not going to impact education. But that's.
So you, in your, in your eyes, I mean, knowing obviously what you know and what you don't know at this point, but I mean, we're not going to have to bring in temporary classrooms or anything like that. You think it could be done just by sectioning off the school?
That's what I would propose. I mean, because much of this work is exterior work. And so the masonry work can start there. We can start with the, again, the, the re-pointing and the, and the washing of the building and then, and then wait till when the roof materials are available, which would probably work well in, for the next, next summer. And so then do potentially the parapet work in conjunction with the roof work next summer. I mean, I know it puts everything off for a, a period of time, but that's, you know, something that we can be a little bit more confident about just because of the availability of materials.
Thanks.
So when you had the engineer come in, the structural engineer, because there were three plans that were proposed as far as for the roof and to make it a little bit more eye appealing with the high school, with the new campus of the high school. And I know the building committee kind of chose option three, which kind of hit all of that, but that was the whole point of the structural engineer. So what was the outcome of that?
So as a result of that, there were, there are five areas of the building where we're putting a gable roof, a metal gable roof, which is part of the, of the design here. Four of the five, no, I'm sorry, six, and four of the six was structurally capable of supporting the, the gable roof. So there was no issues there. The old building, what we are calling building D, which is the adjacent to the auditorium, that portion of the building, that is where we're putting, it's not a real, it's a mansard roof. So it's a sort of a facade roof. But even with that, the engineers have to add some steel to that, to that structure. And also then the main entrance facade, so in the quad, if you're looking at it, the side that's facing, I guess that'd be west. And then the main entrance, those two buildings are mansard roofs. We're still, we're trying to screen the, the equipment. But in both those cases, we have to add some structure, some additional structure to support the systems and, and also to support the, the roof itself.
So the, the last estimate that we got a month ago or so, we were just shy of seven million dollars. So that included all of that structural work, everything?
That's correct.
And you're still close to that number? Is that number still valid? I know until we go out to bid.
I know. I mean, there's no reason, you know, our, if you, you know, our steel numbers were not that far off when we, when we got the bid last time around. It's more of the, the labor part of it and the sequencing part of it. That's going to be something that's tougher to, you know, in terms of how they, how they're, how they're organized around the project. And then of course, you know, trying to work around the school itself. One of the things, the thoughts is that we, we actually have them do sort of second shift work so that the kids are out of school when we're doing that. That might be a little more, more expensive to do, but it might also be a safer way to do things. So those are the types of things that we factored in some of those, those sort of costs into that, into that number that you received.
Okay. And then there was also talk about a possible, the roof, some possibility of state reimbursement? Because if it gets to a certain age, then, then there, there might be?
It's fifteen, fifteen years is that window. So I think you're not.
Okay. So we're not close to, okay.
I think you're like two, three years away from.
All right, we can't wait that long. Okay.
Devin?
So outside of the roof and the, and the brick work, we're confident the rest of the school is viable? Or, or nothing else is failing, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Our, our scope was only for the, for sort of the building onlook, so to speak.
Right.
When we looked at the, you know, there were some openings made in the masonry wall.
Yeah.
And what we saw is that, you know, there's sort of this mesh that you put into the wall. So when you, when they're putting the, the masonry, when they're building the building and putting the masonry in, the grout that falls into the cavity is maintained above the bottom of the, of the wall, cavity wall. Because at the bottom of the cavity wall, there are these things called weeps that are there for moisture to weep out of the cavity wall. They didn't do a really good job with those, with those, that mesh. It's a two-inch cavity, it's, the mesh is only about an inch. And so, you know, it's, it's fallen in there. So we did take a look at that. We're going to be replacing all the weeps. And in that process, also making sure that they're, you know, it's, it's open all the way through, that it's not just, the weep is not going right up against some grout that's been stuck there for a while. So some of this will be on a case-by-case basis. To me, that one of the critical components of this whole project will be when we do the power washing the first time around, it's going to uncover a bunch of things that we're trying to anticipate. And that's when we'll address anything, you know.
Because what concerns me is, you know, when I first got on the council, we were going through a process of, we had X number of dollars in a, in a, in an account used to repair the, the intermediate school. I don't, I think it was windows and leaks and so forth.
There's more age back and the mold issue, yes.
And so my, my, I guess why I'm concerned about it is, okay, so we're, say, say around seven million, it could cost us to do these repairs that Rusty's come up with, you know, the roof and the brickwork. What else is there? I, I guess it's concerning. I, I don't know what to do about it, but it, it's definitely a concern.
The other, other equipment that's there is equipment that's on the roof, that's mechanical equipment. I mean, I haven't heard anything negative about it, that it's not functioning properly and anything like that. All the issues that we were made aware of have to do with water infiltration in the building. So the building systems themselves are coming up to that. Usually there's a fifteen-year life of those systems, at, at which point they start to, to. they start to, to fail, right? But that doesn't mean that they all do. I mean, that's the, that's the sort of the minimum lifespan of pieces of equipment, like, you know, some compressors will have a shorter life, some, some pieces of equipment will have a longer life, so that's going to have to be monitored as you go on with your, in the maintenance program. But we did not address any of that's outside of the scope of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
They were having issues. We had reconditioning, we had to go through all of that.
That's terrible.
Yeah, but now it's just...
Some, a couple of other things. We did have a conversation about all the metal that's, you know, the metal panels that are down low, and you'll see some pictures in there that they're pretty beat up, because whenever you put a metal panel down low, those are not, you know, they could, you can come up and dent them pretty easily. It's not something that typically we would put down low. We would usually put hard materials like masonry down low. There's a couple of areas, especially the panel that's at the main entrance to the intermediate school. You know, we had a conversation with the building committee. We're going to replace that with masonry. So if you go to page four... The top image shows the metal panels, and you can see that they're dented, et cetera. From what I understand, nobody really wanted that, that to be a metal panel that it came with, but it was, and that's how it's constructed. So we're going to take that down, and that's an individual item. It's not connected to the building. It's a freestanding wall. We'll take it down, we'll, we'll put masonry there in place of it, so it's not, not an icework. But there are other areas we just cannot replace, all the metal panels, you know, unless you came back and said, no, we must do it. I mean, it's a whole, it's a different level of, of addressing the panels.
That's one. Dr. Verran?
Hey Rusty?
Yep.
On page three, on, on item five, what are, what are you pointing out there under the dotted lines?
Yes. So that's, that's the, you know, I was talking at the head of the window, where there's no, there's no lintel that we can see, and if you look, it's hard to see that...
What's a, what's a lintel?
That's where the lintel should have been.
No, what is it?
I think it's like a piece of steel, right?
So it's a piece of angle that you predict, you know, what happens, you put the brick right on that angle, because the brick can't span by itself, and you designed the, the angle for, for the extent of the opening, and the brick is placed on that.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know that was called. I have that on my house. I didn't know that was called. Okay.
So in this case, there may still be a lintel back there, but the fact that it might, the brick may only be about a quarter inch of the brick, which is not what you should have, even if that potentially could collapse.
So was this a design flaw or was this a construction?
Both. I, you know, there's design drawings that I looked at indicated that it was not built according to the design drawings that we saw.
So it's a construction?
So it could be a construction issue. But I think you're now 12, 13 years beyond. It should have, it should have been something that, it might have happened over time with the, the masonry, but then masonry's pushed out, but we didn't see any cracks in the masonry itself. In one of the images, the image, the top left, you, there's beginning, you see some beginnings of, of the masonry crushing. So...
So basically when they built it, they cut ones?
Possibly, yes. It should have been a lintel that carried all the way across and supported the masonry properly.
Rusty, is there no problem with getting the same roofing that's going on in high school and it matches, for example?
That's what we're spec, we're spec.
That's what we're specing on, right?
You see some images towards the back of this package?
Yeah, I do see that.
That show the roof and where the roof is going.
I see some that indicate some roofing and some not, some missing a piece.
Right, so...
If you look at page nine, no, I'm sorry, page 10, design number 19 versus design number 20, that middle building, that older, what we're considering the older
Right.
portion of the facility.
So that's not, that's the B, the hybrid version that they're, so A, A option is what we're going to be doing?
A is option.
Right.
Okay. And again, A option for page nine as well?
Yes.
Great.
In all cases, it's the A option. I thought I deleted the options out, but I missed a few.
Well, there's several, there's several A options. It's, they all take...
They're different views, that's, that's what it is.
So if I put design option A, it's clear?
It's, right. It's still a hybrid approach. I think if you look at page eight, the top image of page eight, you'll see that there's still some dark roof in the back there. That's, that's a flat, or, you know, we call it a flat roof, but it's got, it's got a pitch to it. And, but everything that's exposed to the, to the front of the building will have the gable metal roofs. But it's a hybrid in the sense that it's a flat roof and a gable roof. The cost of just putting a gable over the entire building was just...
Astronomical.
Yeah. And, and it became a structural issue mainly.
Okay. But this should suffice to mitigate the water?
Yeah. When you're in the main entrance quad, you will not be able to see the, you know, the, the fact that one's a similar, but it's a thick mansard.
Great. That looks very good.
Any questions for Rusty?
Thank you very much.
Off the hot seat. Thank you, sir, for being here.
And Mike, before you leave, this, the next meeting, we're going to have to have bond resolutions, because we're looking for the preliminary official statement around June 9th.
Okay.
So June 7th is our next meeting. So seven includes you, everything, the whole nine yards?
It does, and it actually includes $100,000 for bonding, just as a placeholder.
Are we doing Stanley T. the same time? Getting money for Stanley T.? Is that anywhere near ready to rock and roll, or?
That is not our contract.
Yeah. Okay. So seven for you, Stanley T., no numbers yet, or any ideas?
I don't have them yet. Mike should have them.
I mean, we have 1.6 from the state.
Right, so we need like maybe a small piece, but are we going to need it this August or wait till next August? Yeah, this. This August. This August, right. I mean, I, we got the 1.6 from the state, our commitment of, of half a million, and...
Ballpark, yes, we put in the ballpark, but...
The CIP hasn't even referenced the middle school at all. Till it gets out.
I know.
So we have to, when we do the CIP subsequently, we'll have to capture the full 7 million for that piece, and we'll have bond resolutions at the next meeting. So a bond resolution is also for Stanley T., not to exceed a 1 million maybe, just give ourselves a little room.
Put yourselves in the book over.
Yeah. Because the 2.1, does that include engineering and architects? That's just the construction deal?
No.
That's the whole shooting match?
Yeah.
So we'll do maybe 1 million on Stanley T. and 7 million on intermediate school?
Yes.
Next meeting.
Okay, so, well, that leads me to my, my question in regards to the bond resolution is, so we all know that Vinnie Candelores, our state rep, was able to secure $4.5 million from the state towards the police department. So this 4.5 million is not on top of the 12 million that we've already bonded?
Authorized.
Huh? Authorized, authorized, I'm sorry. That we've already authorized a little bit over 12 million dollars for the police department.
Correct.
We've received 1.75 million between two grants, between Rosa Delora and, I forgot the other 700.
I think Chris Murphy or...
Yeah, whatever. So we have 1.75, which is my understanding towards the EOC, the 1.75?
1 million is the EOC, 750 was for communications.
Okay.
I believe, right, Debbie?
Okay. Then the 4.5 million that Vinnie secured for us is for the actual police department. So we've authorized bonding for 12 million, and we're hoping, of course, when it goes out to bid, that our bids come in less than that, and the 4.5 million that has been approved by the state, that's also through OPM, like Stanley T. roof is. So we have nothing towards the NBIS project, as Anthony has said, because we didn't know what the numbers were until we just got these not too long ago. So it would be, we talked about this in finance last week, that how do we go about reauthorizing the bond issue so that we basically take 4.5 million away from the police department and put it towards NBIS?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the authorizations, because it just gives you the ability to go up to 12 million. We all know we're not going to do 12 million. We're going to do whatever there is, unless the 4.5 million. So consider them two different animals. You need a resolution for the intermediate school for seven, seven and a half, every think the number's going to be. That's independent of the police station. We're not going to bond, at the end of the day, the full amount of the 12 million, because we have the other sources of income. So say we bond, I don't know, pick a number, 6 million, whatever the number. So when all is said and done, the bond council will deauthorize that delta. So we authorize 12, we bonded, say, 6, they'll deauthorize 6, and it just fall back as, it's a paper transaction. Doesn't mean anything. It's a capacity issue. We have the capacity to do it, but we're not going to do it because we have the additional source of money. The intermediate school is a totally separate animal, so you need to authorize, you know, worst case scenario, whether you do seven, seven and a half. At the end of the day, we're going to bond less, you're 100% correct. I wouldn't touch the authorization until all is said and done. Something may, unforeseen may happen. You don't want to, you know, hinder yourself currently, but it right out until the project is completed, and then at the end of the day, when we actually authorize and actually bond, we'll have firm numbers, and we could deauthorize it at that point.
Correct.
Okay. Just so that everyone is aware, that the police department is, we're not going up, authorizing up to 16.5 million dollars. We're sticking at the 12 million, and when we come to bonding, it will be less than the 12 million, because the 4.5 million that we received from the state towards the police department is going towards that cost.
Coming off the 12.
It's coming off the 12.
So we're authorized that high, but we won't...
We're going to, as Anthony, we'll keep it at the 12 that we're authorized at, but when bids come in and everything comes in, we're knocking 4.5 million off of that.
Right.
Plus 1,750 that we got in other grants, and then we have the 126,000 Steve grants. So there's a lot coming off of that.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question to Anthony?
Yes, please.
Anthony? Anthony?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would the, um, does, does the interest rates affect the bonding going?
Certainly, certainly, yeah.
So obviously our interest rates are going up, have gone up, and, you know, it sounds like for the next future, you know, in the future, they're going to be going up a lot more.
Correct.
So all this money that we're bonding is going to cost us a lot more money. A lot more money.
Yeah. Obviously, if you had a crystal ball, we can get some firm numbers for you, but you're, you're, you're right on target, that the estimates we had previously, the economy has obviously shifted against us.
Yeah.
I'm sure we're going to see a change on our short-term notes, as well as our 20-year bonds.
Anthony, if there was, if it was to go up, say, went up a half, could you, by any chance, just give us some quick numbers with all the bonding next time?
Yeah, I cover the numbers.
If it went up a full, full percentage more, so two more halves, what would it be?
Yep. And again, if you remember last year, what we did last August, too, we captured some of that lower interest cost, and we actually bonded some money. We were going to do notes only, but the rates were so attractive, we actually bonded a piece of that money, which actually is, in hindsight, was, was a really good move, because obviously the rates, as you say, have shifted against us. So again, it's, it's kind of like, you want to be able to capture some of the lower rates, but you don't want to burn yourself with a huge debt service, that your budget's going to increase next year, astronomical numbers, but you captured a lot of interest savings, but you blew it on your, on your bond, your mill rate next year, you know? So it's kind of like, you're walking a fine line. You want to take advantage of the lower interest rates, because it's going to go, get worse as you're predicting, 100% correct. So what's it going to be this year? I, I could ask Mark. We could check the trends. They call it the, there's a matrix that you look at, that shows all the different bond rates, what towns are sized, get our ratings for, you know, one-year notes as well as 20-year bonds, and get an idea.
Yeah, so sort of 1% does, you know?
Yeah. I could certainly do that for you.
That'd be great.
Again, we'll try, we'll try to figure out, too, of the notes we have maturing, does it make sense to roll them, or can we bond some currently now? And again, capture, even though it's not as great as it was last year, I'm sure it's better now than it's going to be a year from now, the way the economy's looking. So he'll look at those numbers and say, okay, how much could we actually bond now to capture some of the better rates, not as good as we had last year rates, but maybe better than we are maybe next year again. But it's a crystal ball. No one knows what's going to happen next year. Your hypothesis is that's going to get worse next year, the way the economy's going.
They're coming out saying they're going up. They're not hyping it.
Exactly.
They're saying it's going up.
Yep.
Thanks, Anthony.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, on to item C, Open Hasway Central.
Yeah, that's just a point of information that the regional water authority announced that the Hasway Center will be opening Saturday, May 21st, and run through Saturday, October 29th for the 2022 season.
Thank you. Okay. On to item four, community events and presentations. A presentation, proclamation for Older Americans Month. Want me to read this?
Yeah.
All right, proclamation, Anthony, I mean, Michael, you're going to present this to the folks on Thursday. This proclamation is in recognition of Older Americans Month 2022, whereas North Bradford includes, includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit from when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome, included and supported, and whereas North Bradford recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible, and whereas North Bradford can work to build an even better community for older residents by planning, by planning programs that encourage independence and ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now, therefore, let it be known, the entire town council, on behalf of the grateful residents of this town, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 17, 2022, as Older Americans Month in North Bradford, dated the 17th day of May 2022, authorized by my signature, fixed there, too.
Thank you. I'll be happy to present that at their event.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Okay. On to agenda item number five, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Mr. Potter, remember, sir?
This is kind of a past event, but this last Saturday, after two years of dormancy on tractor pulling, we had one. It was well beyond my expectations. All the participants that showed up came back after two years of non-pulling, and they've told us, they liked pulling at North Bradford. We treat them pretty decent. But I also, this week is Department of Public Works Weeks, and again, I, I, I'm almost as guilty as most people. You see Franny, Franny's already got a, a list of things to do. Well, he gets up at 4:00 in the morning just to figure out what he's going to do all day. He doesn't sleep. And we hit him with a lot of stuff, didn't phase him. We had to completely redesign the area over by the, over home, because there was a barrier there, and we needed to, we bring a, a heavy scale in that has to go, the truck has to go right there. Franny accommodated, took the barriers down. We had 38 to approximately 42 tractors show up.
Right.
We were, I, I get there about 6:00 in the morning, and I set up signs so they'll all park on the front, so they don't park on the fest grounds. We were there until, well, with cleanup, we finally left, and the rain was so generous to us. We left at 6:00 PM. But the preparation, preparation that the public works did, the picture, when they pull in and see, the grounds are immaculate. They trim, they do everything. And I think we tend to not give the public works the thanks they need. So I want to thank them personally. They groomed the area, they provided picnic tables, we had... We had so many people show up that on, on the driver's list, it maybe shows 28 names, but these guys come with two or three tractors on the trailer. One guy came with a big tri-axle. We had to kind of set him a special spot to park. And they all said that there's two things they love. They love coming to North Branford. And they love the fact that the guy that runs the show for us, Vinnie Germini, he, they follow him because he does a good job. We give them complimentary coffee and donuts. We just make them feel welcome and they, they, after two years of other choices, they came back to us. And I, they're going to be coming back three more times, I'm sure, that amount. So we have to plan accordingly. Ron, the dates are July 23rd, Potato Fest Saturday, and 10:15. Frank Mentone, he put a heck of a picture of a tractor up, but he forgot to put the date on. Frank's okay. We work around that. No, August 6th at the Potato Fest and October 15th. So again, but they, again, I, it's appropriate that we remember our public works. They just, they just outdid themselves once again. They took a complete mess, overgrown grounds that haven't had any activity on for two years. Jerry Adnoffy worked the track and just everybody, they worked well with us. And Franny, Franny, I, you, you know, when he goes, I, I, I don't know what you do. How do you replace that man? I mean, he just, he just knows. You don't have to ask him. He just knows. And I, I called, I sent him an email. I said, how about I talk to you Tuesday? Because I didn't want to bottom round on Monday. I figured everything hits him on a Monday. He says, no, meet me at the farm, 10 o'clock today. I can fit you in. So we met at 10:00 and he said, what do you need? I said, well, that barrier's got to come down because the big scale truck's got to pull in there so we can unload it. He met all our needs. So again, uh, I don't know. Do we, do we have anything planned for our public works, other than more work this week or what? Any, a luncheon, free lunch or anything for them?
Have to look into that and take that under advisement.
Remember, you're on tape. So, I mean, we just, they work hard and they, they meet all your needs. And again, I'm just as guilty. Sometimes we just take them for granted and we shouldn't. They are, I mean, unfortunately, I live on a state road, so I don't get to get the fantastic service you guys get on town roads for snow. But they are, they're a great bunch of guys. We had a good time and it's more to come. But I wanted to recognize them. I mean, I, I, I'm a coordinator. That's, that's, you don't get, my muscles aren't like theirs. But they do the heavy lifting and they do it in a timely manner and it shows. We shine, the town shines when people from out of town come and they look around and we see our grounds and see what we offer them. So they, they do appreciate all that work. So it, you know, they, they came back. So I was surprised. We didn't know what we were going to get. But they, they, they heard we were doing it and a lot of them came back, most of them.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Okay. And again, anyone who's going to speak, please just state your name and your address. And I try to keep everything about five minutes with the left of agenda that we have today. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Chuck Larkins from 62 Clear Lake Manor Road.
Thanks, sir.
I can't believe it's been three years since I came here and approached you for this. But I'm the, I'm the emcee for the Northford, North Branford Women's Club, honor them with a flag ceremony. I've emceed it a few times and it's been since 2019 that we did it. So we're going to do it again this year and I'm here to request the assistance that the town has always given me in the past. Mike and Anthony have helped me with the podium, the speech sound system. I spoke with Lieutenant Lovelace there to get the honor guard. I spoke to Bill Seward, who's going to do the bagpipes for us again. And I'd like to invite all of you to attend the event. Some of the members have in the past. We, the more the merrier. I don't know if it's going to interfere with a meeting because it's Tuesday the 14th.
It's the second Tuesday, so you're good.
Yeah. All right?
You're good.
You're okay.
All right. I didn't know why. It didn't, I, I looked at that and I said, oh, that might interfere.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. But anyway, I'm here to request the help that I've gotten in the past. And I don't expect that to be much of a problem. But also to extend the invitation to you to join us in participating in the event. June 14th, right out in front here, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Appreciate that.
Any questions or anything?
That's great.
Thank you very much.
We're getting this stuff back going again.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get back to normalcy.
Some sense of normalcy, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir?
Bill Savestano, Sunnyside Drive. That thing you just read about older Americans, Mike, where are you going to present that?
Uh, that should be on, on Thursday at the, I believe, I think it's Thursday, uh, lunchtime at the senior center.
Senior Center.
Oh. Uh, I've got some good news for you. Probably in about three years, we're not going to be hearing about the police department, the high school and all this stuff we're building out. So, very good news right off the bat there. Last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that you wanted to cut down on some redundancy in the meeting and the citizen statements. But I noticed there's no reports of commissions on there. Is that, is that an error? Is that something?
No, so we decided to, until there was redundancy, only have reports of commissions once a month.
Oh, good.
And we're going to do that on the second.
The first meeting.
I'm sorry, the first meeting of the month, of course, there's a second, first meeting of the month. So we're not doing it twice. But we did not take out the citizen statements. We did look through our charter. Charter indicates that we have two, so we maintain the two.
I saw.
Unless there are BCs there. So that's staying as is.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say if you would back up my friend Chuck back there, but I don't know where the flag. I've been a little bothered with it and it's going to look good on the, on the green where we get probably 100, 150 flags all lined up there. The Boy Scouts are part of that. Joe Anderson, the veteran in town helps out. But you know, all the money that, the proceeds that come in from that, the Women's Club, can't say enough about the Women's Club. They're into everything these days. They got a golf tournament, they're doing, doing a lot for the food pantry. And so the money they get for those flags, they, they divide it up and it goes to a veterans organization. One happens to be the Quilts of Valor. Now, a couple of weeks ago, you might have saw in the Tataka Times, there was a picture of Chuck and his coordinating partner, Jane Donerty, who presented two female veterans in town with a quilt. Quote, the QOVF.org is the organization. It's a great thing. And so they just, the Women's Club sponsored the honor of the flag. They gave the money to the Quilts of Valor and they in turn, turned around and sponsored the two women and the quilts. So it's a great idea. Say something about Memorial Day. This year, the new coordinator is Kathy Poston out of the senior center to go for, Gina was doing a great job for a number of years. And I'm sure it's going to be great again this year. Hopefully we had good weather. And the good news is, uh, previous mayor Bob Valvigneron is going to be a grand marshal for the party. So that's some good news. Going back about a month ago, last time I was here and the intermediate school, I mentioned about it, they, I was a big part of that thing on the, on the 23rd. And we had a good turnout. It was great weather, which helps especially with the Little League. We had three, I'm giving you a little report of my emissions and so what's in there. So it's a good, good turnout. We had three things that sort of caught everybody's attention. One was Mr. Benny, a new engineer, Victor, had, he demonstrated on a, what is it, Victor?
Enviro.
Enviro's kid. I knew what it was, but I forgot. Anyway, it caught the kids' attention. All about water and what the water, rain does to the environment. And then we had the police, K-9 was there with Officer Kuzenska. Thank the police department again and they supplied some materials for us. And the big kicker was we gave away six packs of sunflowers. I don't know if anybody got one, if anybody was there, but it was something different. We gave away about 60 little trays of sun, sunflowers. So it went over well. Looking forward to next year and maybe more participating from the town departments. I know not every department can offer something, but it would be nice. The hardest part is getting town businesses to participate and having been that successful. Let's move on to the budget real quick. That's an arduous task every year. And at the end, Rose does everything. She does her thing to finish it out there. But I notice I've been coming to meetings a long time here. And I can't say as I know everything about that budget, but last couple of years, you've been spending a lot of money. I can't say it's, it isn't needed. I mean, there's been a lot of factors involved. But going forward, I think everybody's got their little wishes here and there. Hopefully we get a, a handle on it. We talked about all the money you're borrowing the next number of years, so. Let's see if we can get a handle on that. Talked about the ARPA funds a little bit earlier. I watched some other town meetings and maybe somebody picked up on it. But within the last month, I guess any town that gets below $10 million, and we're only at four, right? That they have a more broader range of how to use it. You get that notice, Mike?
Yeah, that's what the council did.
Yes. But anyway, just, I didn't know if you guys knew about that. That's about it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizen statements? Gentlemen, thank you for your time today. We appreciate it. Certainly, certainly some great things are here and bring to our attention. Okay, so we're going to move on to item six, resignations and appointments. Don't see any, so we're going to go on to the next gen item. Number seven, unfinished business discussion in action. A, training for the fire department chief?
Still on hold.
Okay. Keep that in the wetlands, okay? Item B, discussion in action and ARPA funds?
Okay, so I'd like to make the first motion based on our workshop that we had just before this meeting. I would like to make a motion to allocate an amount for the South Central Regional Mobile Command Unit not to exceed $140,000 from the ARPA funds.
Okay, we motion by Councilor Giallo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, that passes. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Weston and Sampson feasibility study for the sewers at a, an amount not to exceed 80,000.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Okay, I think that pretty much wraps up ARPA. I think we're going to
Right.
add that to unfinished business. They could maintain that unfinished business for next month or next meeting, next month, because we're going to have a presentation from Anthony.
We'll have Anthony come back with, with the numbers on FIBR.
Correct.
And do you want to schedule or look at another workshop at some point for other items? Like I know Victor's here, working on the numbers on sewer and the natural gas as well.
Victor, will you be good for the 7th or want us to kick it up, second meeting of June?
That, or the, the
Well, gas.
Gas in the Northford section?
Yeah, we better, we better talk about that.
Okay, and then Fran's got some, you know, he's got some issues, obviously talking about the storage. I just didn't know if you'd want to encapsulate that in a more, another workshop to kind of flesh those out.
Do we want to do that before the 7th?
Or maybe go?
Or before the meeting following that, which is the 21st?
Right.
I would say the 21st, give it.
21st.
Okay, why don't we schedule, everyone go down this side? 21st for 6 o'clock? Let's do a 6 o'clock meeting on the 21st, so there's an ARPA budget workshop.
May 21st?
Uh, no, June.
June 21st, second meeting, yeah, at 6.
Before, before our council meeting. It is the 21st, right?
Yeah.
Um, can you just tell me for that motion, so the funds are being allocated for the feasibility study for
Sewer extension.
Sewer extension, Downford 80.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's Weston and Sampson is a company?
By Weston.
And Sampson.
Sampson, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to Fox Road Route 80 sewer extension table from May 3rd.
Kind of did that.
Yeah. I didn't know if there's anything from, can maintain the table, okay.
Victor, do you know about how long that feasibility study will take?
I don't know if there's something else going to be done.
Probably.
They charted out, I think it charted out at like six to eight months.
Weeks, six to eight months.
I, I think all in, all in total, that's what rounded out the odds. I'll have to check again to be sure, but.
That's a heck of a long time.
But the feasibility study part, I didn't think was maybe the whole project because they were talking about like next year, if we approved it.
Right.
One construction season to get them in.
Right, it was almost a, it was almost a year process just to get
To that point.
From the feasibility study into the bidding process and then out to, basically out to construction. So that's why I'm throwing six to eight months. I'll have to look at the charting.
But the feasibility, I think the actual report was a shorter period of time, I believe. I just didn't have time to get my stuff here together. Aye.
I do have it, but I have to get to that.
It's supposed to be worked on.
Here, there it is.
Project schedule was five, five months?
August, August.
April to, if they started in April, it would go April to August.
Right. So it would be extended out if it didn't, because they didn't start it yet. That was
Right, right, right.
So if it's two months out, then it's, okay. So it's his fault.
I put, I put a, a three-month buffer on it.
Okay.
One to three-month buffer.
All right.
Okay, we'll be going to item eight, new business discussion in action. Item A, appointment of tax collector intern?
Yeah, I just prepared a motion requesting the council approve the interim position to Judy. We've already brought on board and just sort of a formality so I can get her sworn in. And she's going to be here for a while until we get that permanent replacement. So Judy Haley, I think you've had the information. I've also, I think, provided again today. But she's already on board and working for us in a part-time capacity.
I will accept the motion.
In accordance with section C 6-3 of the Charter of the Town of North Branford, the town council hereby confirms the town manager's appointment of Judy Haley of Milford, Connecticut to serve as the interim tax collector until a permanent replacement is hired.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Giallo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a little quick question. I don't, I don't really know if it makes a difference or not. But you did say she was only going to be working like three days a week or something like that.
Right.
Should we label it as part-time, just to clarify that, or does it not matter? I mean, I'm just asking a question.
I'm not sure it matters and, uh, it matters.
It doesn't matter?
Interim, yeah. Whether full, part-time or full-time, it's the interim.
Okay, sir.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, might as well ask her, trying to. Still got it?
I, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
In terms of the actual appointment, there will probably be an employment letter of some sort that will set forth the expectations.
Okay. Thank you, town attorney. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? You're, you're, you did a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. Abstained? Okay, thank you. On to...
And the, uh, just as a point of information, the ad for that position has gone live today.
Okay.
It's out.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, um, B, approval of bid specification RFP number two dash two zero two two zero two zero two three, agent broker of record for the Town of North Bramford and Board of Education benefits program.
So I just have a question in regards to this, since this is just employee benefits on here, and most of our union contracts were settled this past year, and the one that we're going into right now, they already have a commitment on their health insurance for a couple of years. So what exactly does this, what exactly are we paying for in this if all of the contracts and their benefits are already established? And we're with the state plan on most plans except for the public works, um, and it's a couple of years, so what are we looking at?
Yeah, all, all that they really do for us, quite honestly now, is group term life insurance. They shop that out annually for us to get the best rate. Uh, they do, they are there to answer questions, they do correspond to us if there's any questions as far as benefit changes, things you want to do, whether it's disability insurance for the police, things like that, that they get involved. There are a couple of things, obviously, you're a hundred percent correct, not as robust as they were back in the day when we were negotiating with Anthem directly. You're also correct that the, the team's just plan is basically locked in for three years, there's no discussion there, they're not involved in that. The state plan, they do get involved with as far as an intermediary, they, they, the state, the state corresponds with them to correspond with us sometimes as well, so they're kind of getting the middle of that correspondence.
But if we had an HR person, would we need this?
Um...
Different rule.
Well, no, they could be...
Potentially, potentially no. Potentially, you could have this, that person...
I mean, but they're not doing a lot.
Not, I agree with you a hundred percent. Not doing anywhere near the work that they did in, in a prior life.
So in the, how much were these bids, how much did we pay in the past on these bids? Like, what did these bids come in at?
Twenty thousand dollars a year.
That's a lot of money.
Well, consider, you have to hear the history on it. We, we previously, when we were with Anthem, we had the broker which paid on a commission basis, and the commission they were earning was in the neighborhood of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year. We opted out of that method, methodology, and we chose to go to a hard dollar fee, right to the broker.
Fee for service, yeah.
Fee for services. So we went from paying eighty or ninety thousand, it was kind of buried in our Anthem rates, you never really saw the bill.
Yeah.
But we're paying eighty to ninety thousand dollars to the broker, we're paying twenty thousand dollars now for this service. So it does save us some money. I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent that if they're not working anywhere near as, as hard as they did in the past. Could a, a, a human resource person do it? Probably. I mean, they have the relations with some of the, the companies, but I'm sure a human resources person could establish those same...
Is that well, or is there contracts for specific, is that printed up?
This is for three years?
They saw it's a three.
With an option for two?
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's, I, I totally understood it prior to all of the switching, and if it was, if this was for our commercial insurance, I could definitely see that. But based on the limited amount that they're really getting involved in, if it's just group life...
Why don't we table this for now and see if you can have, Mike, can you talk to our HR team that we've brought on and see if they can assist in this?
Would, would it make sense to go ahead with a bid and then reevaluate once we have the bids? I mean, what's, what's the...
You can always collapse the bid.
We can run, run a parallel process where we can throw it out, find it.
At least that way, we have everything at once, so we're not starting at square one again.
Right.
And I can also check with ARPA.
No harm in that, in going a bid.
Okay, I'll accept a, a motion for that bid.
Go ahead, Tom.
It's just to make a motion to approve bid spec for RFP two dash twenty-two, twenty-three, agent of record for Town of North Bramford Board of Education Employee Benefits Program.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
I'm gonna do second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, moving on, uh, we're gonna, item C, approval of bid specification for RFP number three, two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three, townwide parks and recreation feasibility master plan?
Yeah, and there was just a, a minor fix, um, I think I gave circulated two U language for RFP three was changed, um, and we had just a typo in the URL address, but we also had, uh, a language change in the middle paragraph, the town's plan to invite a short list of responding firms for an interview based upon its review of the written submissions, and your firm shall be, uh, shall have staff available and selected for the interview, gift selected for the interview, so that was the only, the only change in there.
Okay. Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Downs.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question, Mike. I see in here it says, "Conduct a high-level overview of Board of Education facilities." Did anyone tell the Board of Ed that that was in there? I thought we were just doing town fields.
I can't speak to that, I, I would have to ask the director if they had that conversation with the superintendent.
I just think that's important to know.
So, um, what are we looking to get out of this? I mean, what, what's the end result we're looking for?
What's, where to spend time and energy and what fields and what, you know, what, if we're gonna, so the, the example was if certain fields aren't being utilized, like Northford Park has a softball slash Little League field, if it's only being used for a very small amount of time versus another field being used much more, both need a certain amount of work, it's creating some hierarchy as to when that work would take place. That's how I understood it.
Okay, so I guess my next question then would be, would this be the responsibility of the, the manager of a department to come up with a plan? She did. She asked for this. She wanted to do the feasibility study for this, for all of the parks, uh, for all of the, uh...
It was her and Franny.
Yes.
Both agreed to have someone in the area of design and to look at all of this. Because they both, they both felt that they weren't...
It was above, right.
It was about them.
Essentially.
No, right, but my, I guess, again, my point is, isn't it the responsibility of a department head to help come up with the plan? Because this is the things that, that concern me, is we do a lot of feasibility studies, and quite frankly, in my opinion, the feasibility study gets done, we dabble it with a little bit, in the drawer it goes, and, and, and I don't think anyone can, can dispute that, and that's what concerns me.
Well, I think we have to stay...
So, so I, I, well, so I guess my, my point is, you know, people, I, I believe we have pretty good people in our departments, don't get me wrong, but it's, you know, some people need to be coming up with visions and ideas and presenting them, I mean, that's, that's what managers do. Just my opinion, so. I, I just hate to spend money to go in the drawer.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, you know, sometimes we have to do it, but other times, I mean, we really gotta think about, are we gonna, are we gonna accept it? Let me, let's put, let's, let's, let's think of that like that.
Well, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying a hundred percent, and, and I think that the feasibility study thing is something that's probably been abused here over the years, um, but I think to your point, allowing them to go forward by doing this probably would give those department heads the tool that they need to actually come up with that plan, which is what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I just bring up the concerns, I have been wa, I've been watching it for the last four or five years, and...
It's been used as a stall effect and...
Well, it's not that, it's like, we're not sure what we wanted, I'm not saying here, but in many cases, we're, we're, we're trying to accomplish something, but, but, you know, the hardest thing that I see in accomplishing any, any project or any goals or anything is, is the completion of it and sustainability of it.
Inertia.
Right? The initial part, getting it done, yeah, it's nice, it makes everyone feel nice, warm and fuzzy, but can we, can we, can we take it and apply it? That's, that's my concern, that's, that's the only thing. Ready?
Sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you there, sir.
Tom, it's, it's a bid proposal data, so they accept the bids and have to come back to us with what the amount is, then you'll have a great opportunity to decide whether or not the cost would be worth what they're gonna do for us. So it's kind of like the first one that we said, well, let's see what they come back with us. And I agree with you in part, but also, I'd like to see what kind of costs are gonna come, and if they're gonna comply with it.
Right, so we don't know the cost yet.
No, we don't know the cost yet, we still, we don't know if the feasibility is gonna be worth it or not, do we get a, a dollar amount?
Right, yeah, that's fair enough.
The other thing that I took away from it too was that, because I, I echo Tom's concerns, I think a lot of us do, but the other thing I took away was, was that they were talking about doing some major repairs to fields, putting in irrigation systems and everything else like that, and I, I, well, the way I took it was, they wanted to be, uh, more cautious with the town's money, and, you know, yeah, we want to do this on these fields, but is that really the right thing to do? Shouldn't we be, you know, looking at a bigger plan and spending the money more wisely rather than just kind of piecemealing and just fixing things individually? So it's a tough, I, I agree with Tommy, though, I mean, we definitely do that a lot, but...
I, because, and, and I, I understand all of our input, you know, and that's why I'm bringing it up, but, um, I also believe that we, we, meaning people in North Bramford, the department heads, the, who, the people in charge, and, and also the people that, that contribute to North Bramford, know what we need to do. Sometimes we don't need somebody out, out, out in, in the world to tell us what to do, you know, that's what, I, I, you know, so we've got to be confident among ourselves too, so, but I do, it's, it's not an easy thing, and I agree.
I think, I think what we're looking at, I, I think feasibility studies are worthwhile when we're looking at big-ticket items, so that, you know, we're being fiscally responsible, we're not getting in over ahead of something that we're, we're not really qualified to deal with. Um, I think we need to be really skeptical on, you know, feasibilities for smaller, uh, you know, small projects that aren't gonna cost as much, but...
I think it was not the best thing for your buck, let's see what they, what they propose.
Okay, another discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
Was there a motion?
There was.
There was a motion, was there? There was a motion, okay. We got so much talking.
Yeah. Okay, on to the next, approval of bid specifications RFQ slash P number five, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, web z, web design and development. This is still...
Yeah, we collapsed, yeah, we collapsed, we're gonna go back, yeah, we're going back out and, uh, you know, to get a, we had a couple of addendums and questions, and this would be a better...
It's been one heck of a long process to get a website up.
Yeah.
Let's get this done, like yesterday. Can I ask a question? Please. Did, we had the dog and pony shows for these, for the website and designs, so now it's gonna go out to a, for a bid, for these three people to, people to...
Anthony, yeah. Let's have it, Anthony. What, what happened was, we had five people come before the council, and when the RFP went out, one out of the five actually put a bid in, and two other people from other places put a bid in. We contacted the people that came before you, there was confusion, we had requirements in there for a performance bond to protect the town. We're gonna get paid in, pay you in installments at seventy-five percent, if you decide to leave, what are we left with? So we have a performance bond to protect the town. They didn't understand that. We have a bid bond that says, if you tell them you're gonna charge me a thousand dollars, you're charging me a thousand dollars. You can't say, oh, wait, I'm in fifteen hundred dollars. So the bid bond locks you in. Those two things confuse a lot of people. I guess in that world, they don't do bid bonds and performance bonds, but to protect the town, we want a bid bond and performance bond. So a lot of them didn't bid because they were concerned about, you know, this additional cost they had incurred and everything else, but to protect our interests, we had to have those in there. So I've talked to a couple of the ones, the, the ones that came before you guys, there was that misunderstanding as to what the bonds actually require, what the purpose of them was, I think I've kind of, you know, explained that to them where they get the point, they made bids now, but as Mike mentioned, there was some addendums that went out and everything else, so let's clarify it, do it again, and hopefully get a better response.
Okay, I've just, no, the concern is, I know that, uh, one of them, I mean, we didn't, I wasn't impressed with them.
Yeah, we did that.
So if they were the ones that were gonna bid and they're the lowest bid, we have to go with them. I wasn't kind of...
Well, it's lowest responsible bidder, the way that...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so it's not always the low bid.
So the, the go-forward is going to be, if we're gonna go through our presentation, they have, have a bid on the table, and we have to basically look at both, what they do as well, what the cost is. Wasting time between, we, we've had five presentations, of which we're gonna, likely going to see most of any of them.
I, I would like to...
That's a complete and total waste of time.
Well, the thought, the, the concept was to see five different people's versions of a website and garner bits and pieces, oh, I like the way he has the calendar, this one has the, the Google approach, this one has different, different facets of it, and we can compile and to make one, ours the best out of all the pieces. That was the whole concept of having five different people come in and give you the presentations.
That should be done in committee or, you know...
Well, you guys are committed, I gotta make this decision.
Yeah, I know. Well, I, what I was gonna say is, it was, it was a little, it was a little bit much to have five. I think, I think if you guys interviewed people and at your discretion recommended the top two or three...
Right.
You know, that would be a little bit, a little bit better.
And it was also, there was that two different schemes, there was the, the large guys that a lot of neighboring towns have, we wanted to bring some of those before you guys, and there's the local people that have done well for us on our own EDC websites and, and library websites, give them a chance to have, show off their, their talents as well. That was the whole concept, try to get a little broadband and get everybody in there.
Yeah, well, what we didn't want to do was design in a vacuum and, and throw something out there, and you, and you come back and say, where did this come from? I mean, why didn't, you know, look at that. I mean, there's nowhere to go, I don't think there's nobody where to go but up.
The one that should, that did Madison's, did they, did they send a bid in or did they decided not to?
Which one, I'm sorry?
The one, the last one we saw that did Madison's.
Uh, negative.
They did not give a bid?
The only one that came before you to put a bid in was Final Site, I think that's one Marie liked at the time. They, they put a bid in, uh, but Civic Plus, Q-Sen, the two big players in the area, did not put bids in.
Really?
Because they don't get involved in those performance bonds, that's something that they were, it was foreign to them, until I explained to them, we're kind of protecting the town's interest, and that's why we put it out there, by the way.
So they, they've never done, then they've never got a bid, uh, you know, that's...
They've never had to put a performance bond, oh, that's, that's for construction only, is it?
Well, not really.
Typically in construction, that's true.
Yeah.
You don't want half a built building, we also don't want half a built website. You know, we gotta protect the town's interest, that's why it's in there.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the bid specs for RFQP number five, twenty-one, twenty-two, website design and development.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond, you know, very quick second. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed? All right.
Hope this is the last one.
Okay, yeah. Let's get this done. Tom has got a napkin, he's gonna take pictures of it and do a slideshow. All right, um, let's see here. Approval of bid specification for bid number four, two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, general trades, masonry service.
Yeah, the next four, I believe, are, are typical, what we do, um...
Are these all Franny's?
Huh, yeah.
Are these like Franny's?
Yeah, these are Franny's, right, Franny's.
Can we do it once? Town Attorney, can we do these as once, as one bid package or one approval?
You can do one approval if you, if you state what they are, move, uh...
Just move...
Okay, so then I will...
Approve all items E, F, G...
H.
So it's bid four, five, six, seven and eight?
All right, I'll accept the...
That's right.
Motion for bid four, five, six, seven and eight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna give that to Deputy Mayor Zampano. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? None, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed, fantastic. All right, and then on to J. Discussion and possible action draft agreement with the Board of Ed to use the Auger House.
Did this, did the Board of Ed come back?
Nothing yet.
Oh, okay.
But it was sent to them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And, and for the, you know, entire board, but nothing come back from the, from the Board of Ed yet.
It was, it was sent, Scott had asked to have it sent to him so he could forward it to their lawyer, which I included in my email to Brian when I gave him, after Finance, talked about it. So that's the last that I knew that's...
It's tabled for now.
And we'll see if their vision matches ours.
Oh, sure.
Simple.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It's just a user, right. We wanted to keep it simple, one page.
We'll see what comes back.
Could be fun, okay. All right, we'll table that for now. Item K, review of rules and procedures.
Yeah, I think you raised this, Mayor, and this was about how many times we have public comment and, and review. It is part of the rules of procedure, so that's included for your review, but it sort of outlines the agenda with two, and we have, I guess, grown to three in some cases when we add the WPCA and...
Okay.
But I believe we have the ability, I'll let the attorney speak to that, but the council has the authority and ability to modify.
You can amend your rules of procedure. This is not a charter.
Right.
Okay.
These are your procedural rules, so you can eliminate one if you so choose, or both, and have it once a month, whatever you wanna do.
Okay. So that's on the council or myself as Mayor to do that?
You would probably have a motion and have a vote of, of the body amended. And if you notice, on the rules themselves, they have been amended several times over the years.
Does it dictate?
So, really...
It actually dictates an order of what your agenda is.
My thought process was when we had WPCA and we had regular town, I think there's three slots, can someone only bring comment in, in what are, the what are authority portion about what are authority? Or they comment about anything? Meaning, is it, the redundancy of three times seems like, I'm trying to narrow down why we have two-hour meetings in North Branford, where we should, we should go a little swit, a little sweat through.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Please.
I would say, in my opinion, if, if we were going to remove one, I would remove the second one at the end of the meeting.
Correct.
Because it's, by that time, we've already voted and stuff, so any comments that somebody may have can't be taken into consideration for voting or making motions throughout the meeting. I think if we kept the first one, we could, we, we could, it, it would be more formative to, to the council. If, if everybody agreed that that's what they wanted to do.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily saying that we're going to do this. I think there's been, um, those who have expressed interest in maintaining it as is. But there are nights where we have pretty packed agendas, and if it happens to be a WPCA meeting, it, it comes about three times. So, we can, we can table this for now and discuss this if we want to. It's, I just wanted to know what our rules were. Not necessarily an action to do it, but just know what, what kind of leeway we have.
You can amend them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, on to, thank you, sir. On to the financial report from month end, April 30, 2022. Mr. Zito?
Good evening, sir. The report you have in front of you compares April of 2022 to April of 2021. The report remains unremarkable. The items that I typically highlight, tax collection, again exceeding last year's percentage, nine to nine point four at very top, compared to nine to nine point one last year. Overall revenue, again exceeding last year, ninety-eight point four percent of budget, compared to ninety-seven point nine percent of budget. Expenditure side in total remains behind last year, only seventy-eight point two percent expended compared to eighty point four. A new over expended department this month is the property and casualty insurance. And what's driving that is several new vehicles that were purchased townwide that really impacted our auto insurance. Police got some new vehicles, fire department got an engine and ambulance, all the works got some new vehicles. So those additional premiums were not factored into the initial amount, and that's what's driving that number over, over budget. Aside from that, the report remains unremarkable. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Yes, sir?
So on the property taxes delinquent, are there, are there numbers, are there properties that may not be included in there that we wouldn't be expecting to get payment from? Because I noticed we're at a hundred and five percent of what we thought we'd get.
Right.
So I was just wondering if there's more?
No, I think what happened this year, prior council, Council Moreno actually foreclosed on a couple of people that had some significant delinquencies.
Yes.
And captured some significant revenue for us. If you recall, the process that, that will happen is, in May-June timeframe, the, the, Marshall has now gotten the 2020 motor vehicle and personal property bills. They'll be with them through June 30th. After that, it goes to a collection agency. The real estate, we're gonna compile a list to have for, between you guys at your June meeting, which you then will decide to forward on to the town attorney if it warrants to going to foreclosure or other actions through the town attorney. But that's real estate. That's handled separately than, than motor vehicle.
All right.
But what Council Moreno did was, it was a couple of, of real estate taxes that had some big numbers that he was able to get cleared up for us.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is the appropriation transfers. The top one, again, topic that's been discussed over and over again, the work done at the police station is the twenty-five thousand dollars there. At the bottom, the other twenty-five thousand is just the additional transfer on the ambulance account. The initial amount, I think, was one fifty, should've been one seventy-five, just picking up that balance. The ones in the middle are some small ones from the library, communications and social services.
I make a motion to approve the appropriation transfers as submitted.
Second. All right. Motion by Counselor Johnny, seconded by Counselor Downs. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed? Thank you. Okay. And on to, oh, set mill rate for, I'm sorry, on to N, approval of tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
I missed that one, I'm gonna give it to Counselor Diamond. So, uh, motion by Counselor Johnny, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
I haven't ever seen that before.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed, thank you. And on to O, that was, Counselor Diamond was the second and Angela was the first.
Yes, thank you.
And O is set mill rate for 2022 and 2023?
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the 2223 fiscal year at thirty-three point two-three mills and further authorizes Michael T. Paulus, town manager, to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July 1st, 2022 and January 1st, 2023.
Second. Motion by Counselor Johnny, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Yeah, so Mike, what was the percentage that came up to vote? Do you remember?
It was under two, I think.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, I know I was number forty-nine in District One at four-ten, and the, so that, the polls were already open half the time, so I couldn't imagine it being...
I did hear that most people were happy with the results.
How many actual people voted?
Two percent.
Less than two percent.
Less than two percent.
Of the voters. So there's eight, over eight thousand voters, so, you know, you're talking one-sixty maybe, so?
Just happened to have the numbers. There we are.
Let's extend this party as much as we can.
Uh, total people voted was a hundred and forty, townwide.
We know two of them right here.
How many?
Out of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight, one point five percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
The winner was District Three, just, just saying.
Well, I've had the smallest district.
Well, come on, percentage-wise, two, two percent District Three, only one point one of District One.
One point one.
One point one of District One, one point seven District Two, two percent for District Three. District Three wins.
All right.
Only one point one percent care about their taxes.
One point five.
I think a lot of people were happy with the fact that it was a very miniscuous improvement and say, miniscuous, get the word out.
Miniscuous.
Miniscuous, thank you. Get that word out of my mouth. You know, increase, and we did a great job in trying to keep it as flat as possible, so.
And actually, without providing for the, the car tax from the state, we actually would've had a mill rate decrease.
Correct.
And the way I look at this is, you know, those turnouts are driven, the numbers are driven by people who are unhappy. If something, you don't generally show up to vote for something that's already happening.
Right.
So, you know, you, you're gonna show up to try to be a creep up to it. So, and that's why, you know, we'll, this discussion have further down the road, obviously, but the, the whole purpose of doing this and wasting the resources to actually open up the polls for these spots so that one half percent can show up to...
Yes, it does cost thousands of dollars.
It's, it makes no sense.
Tip to go to Counselor Downs' point. Of the hundred and fifty, eighty-eight, said if they rejected it, it was too high. Eight rejected it, it was too low. So ninety-six rejected it, basically. Forty-four said they were, they accepted the budget.
It was eight inches, what, that's what I'm saying. Okay. All right, so we're on to...
Do we have to take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to take a vote, of course. We didn't do that yet, we had a lot of discussion here. All right, all, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed, thank you. On to nine, citizen statements and petitions. Any further? Please state your name and address, sir.
Cliff, are you gonna use the second citizen statements and petitions to argue for keeping the second citizen statement?
I am, oh, Clifford Potter, twelve fifty-one North Town Avenue, Norfolk, Connecticut. Thirty-three years in the military, I understand regulations and procedures. If you see me back there wiggling, I may not agree with something you said. And the second, nobody else stays, I'll stay. I'll support you guys. I feel both statements are important because you discussed, some nights, yes, there's something we may not be happy with. And if we don't make that known at the end of the night, you will never know how we felt about something. So I look at it as a...
I guess you can play it away, but okay.
I, I mean, and maybe you'd be better off sometimes, right? But I feel it's a way for citizens, and if they don't show up, then they can't complain.
Yeah.
But it's a way for us to talk back to you, yea or nay, and thank you for doing that, or really, should that have been that way? But all of you will hear it at the same time.
That's fair.
And so I, and again, I will never abuse it. I might wiggle a little bit back there because I'm not happy with something, but I will respect your procedures to the max. So I feel it's very important at the end of the meeting because so much is covered that you can't project what might be said at the beginning, but at the end of, while you hash it all through, we have a chance to give you a little bit of a feedback.
That's, that's fair.
Okay?
That is fair.
And I'll stay here with you guys, because you donate your time. People hit and run. And then you'll have, you know, a hot issue, people comment or complain, but will they ever come back to the next meeting? No. So...
And we don't have any complimentary coffee and donuts ever at these meetings.
Well, I can work that out for you. I'll lend you my coffee. Also...
We do get some great candies provided by Michelle, thank you. Come on, get coffee and donuts for us, we'd love a candy.
So again, I mean, it's just, I mean, you guys do a good job, really. Your clicking, your budget was good. I'll tell you, I do a no-show because it's a yes vote. There's been some years in the past where it was close, and I don't think the people that were voting the wrong way ever really watched what you put into the effort. So I will be a no-show because it'll always be a yes and will never hit the maximum, because who knows? Somebody might rile everybody up and you'll hit fifteen percent and it'll be all no's. And it'll be shot down. My thinking, I sit on, I don't know. But thank you for listening to my citizen comment. It used to be thirteen.
Yeah.
It's going back up to nine, so you are making progress. I think citizen comments used to be thirteen, weren't they, one time? So I had to sit through four more items.
Just trying to make people happy here, you know?
So again, that's, that's the other reason, I, I mean, at least you can all hear a little back, backdraft or a little back info.
Sure, makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yep.
We do appreciate the support. Okay.
One comment on Facebook.
Oh, yes, please, yeah.
Mary Alyssa Giovanni, reference to Bill Sabastiano, thanked him for his work on the Earth Day event and appreciates all his commitment to the community.
Yeah, Bill does a great job. He certainly does a lot.
Mary Alyssa Giovanni. Mary dash Alyssa, E-L-I-S-S-A, Giovanni.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. All right, I will accept a motion to go into executive session, ACGS dash two hundred C six, a town manager quarterly report review, and that would be town manager, town attorney. Do we need Anthony? No, Anthony's off the hook.
And I don't think we...
Nope, you're good here, thank you, sir.
He's gonna release everybody.
No, it's hundreds?
Just town manager. Yeah, I have mine all printed out.
You're welcome to say if you'd like, but if you'd like to boogie on out, you're welcome to do that. All right, do we have a motion on floor?
So moved, second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Johnny, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stamed? We are in executive session.